Good evening. I'll open this workshop for the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We do have a quorum of members present, and at this time, the board will go into closed session pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act under Texas Government Code, Chapters 551.071 and 551.072. Good evening. Thank you for being with us this evening in such a dreary, foggy, and wet evening, but we appreciate you being with us. I'll reconvene this meeting. We will now attend to the business that we have on our agenda. And as we move forward, on behalf of the board and Dr. King Cannon, I wanted to make a brief statement. Waco ISD lost a treasure when we learned of the passing of Coach Mike Chapman. He touched the lives of thousands of students and student athletes as a coach, educator, and role model. He had a servant's heart and was a friend to everyone. He will be missed, but his legacy will live on with those who knew him. During this difficult time, please keep Coach Chapman and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. We'll proceed now. We don't have audience for guests, so at this time, we'll move to Item 5, Review and Discuss Human Resources Update. Dr. McWilliams.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for starting off by speaking about Coach Chapman. So this is a sort of a quick review to kind of remind you about contracts. We're about to come up with the contract approval process, so I wanted to go over those different types of contracts with you, and also something that's new and we're excited about, the Teacher Incentive Allotment, the TIA. So there's sort of a hierarchy in employment in a school district, and it's the same in Waco ISD. We have at-will employees who have no contract. There's about 1,400 of those. We have then non-Chapter 21 contracts, and we have two of those, and we're heading toward having none next year. Those are being phased out by school districts. We have about 525 on professional probationary contracts this year, and then 710 on our professional term contracts. So this is sort of the hierarchy in a school district. So then we break them down, the professional probationary and the professional term contracts, into these groups. Each group has administrative professional probationary contracts, and then professional dual probationary and professional, regular professional probationary contracts, and then in term, the term administrator contracts, the dual term contracts, and the regular term contracts. And so just real quickly, I would say that I think you know the administrators are the campus and district administrators. The dual contracts are very predominantly at middle school and high school, predominantly high school. They are your dual contracts. They both are weighted equally. They are generally for coaching and teaching. So those are called dual contracts. They don't have any more rights than a regular teacher, but those coaches' contracts are dual contracts, what we call dual contracts. The at-will employees, just to explain a little bit about them, per our policy, can be dismissed at any time for any reason not prohibited by law or for no reason. We don't let principals just call and say, "I want to terminate an at-will employee." Not at all. We certainly follow the rule of law, but it doesn't require the level of work that we do with the contract employees. And so what happens is during the summer, the returning at-will employees, so those who don't work 226 days, like the campus at-will employees that don't work 226 days, we give them what's called a letter of assurance so that they know that we're asking them to come back each August. The non-Chapter 21 contracts are provided positions, provided for certain positions. Again, they're rarely used, but they're the ones that are not governed by Chapter 21 of the Education Code. I usually like to say they're worth about the weight of the paper that they're on, but they're a little bit higher than at-will, but nowhere near those Chapter 21 educator contracts. Then we move to our professional probationary contract employees, and so these are our employees who are new. They're our employees who are new. They're teaching for the first time. They're principals, classroom teachers, nurses, supervisors, school counselors, and others who may require ESPEC certification, like speech therapists, for example. And so when they start out, they're on a probationary contract. The probationary contract is automatically renewed unless we present it to you and the board takes action to terminate the contract. And a board may, it's of course much less involved with a termination of a probationary contract employee. That's always done in the best interest of the district. And so I want to go over a little bit about DOI. Waco, of course, is a district of innovation, so that brings a lot of changes to the probationary contract here in Waco. And so after January 1st of 2017, our probationary teachers have five years, five years on a probationary contract. Now, we can give three-year probationary contracts, we can give them three years if they had taught five of eight years of the past eight years in a Texas public school. So that's the length of time you're on a probationary contract. And so the principal must decide whether to make the recommendation for termination of a probationary contract or just extend the probationary contract. It goes like probationary one, probationary two, and so forth. And then the highest level of contracts that we have in a school district are the professional term contract employees. So after you go through your probationary term, then you're given a term contract. It too is automatically renewed each year unless the employer resigns or the board takes action and provides the proper notice to non-renew. And as you know, there are many steps to that, the term contract non-renewal. But the final action, of course, is taken by the board, and it can be based only on Policy DFBB. And I think there are three pages of reasons in Policy DFBB for the recommendation of non-renewal of a term contract employee, whereas a probationary contract employee recommendation for termination is one sentence, "in the best interest of the district." So we look at the timeline for spring. It's going to be a little bit different in Waco this year. For the past several years, you have had brought to you two and three times the contracts. This time, it will be one time. On April 23rd, we will bring the lists of the contracts for you, for you to take action on the contract recommendations. You'll have those lists, the list of the probationary, the list of the term contracts. And then the following day, once you approve those, they'll be provided to the employees, and then the employees will have until May 4th to sign their contracts. Should we have any employees that we bring to you on April 24th for a recommendation for termination, that being a probationary employee, or a recommendation for non-renewal, that being a term contract employee, then we will follow all of the law with that. Our hope always is not to have any of those, but we are working with principals who have any concerns with their contract employees at this time. Do you have any questions or thoughts about this part of the presentation about contracts? Cool.
No, I'm just wondering if it's darn useful, the differentiation between the standard Chapter 21 contracts and the one that I know is a district of innovation. I can read it, I can imagine some ways that are useful for any of the departments, but I'm not really experienced in all of these.
So, until you hear somebody.
Wow, that's a little bit thorough and quick.
Sure. So for many years, many, many years, as far as I know, forever, probationary contracts, you had to go three years. You had to go three years. I went three years, everybody had to go three years. And so at the end of your third year, you have to decide to either go to a term contract or terminate. There's every once in a while, the board can select to go to a fourth-year probationary, but it's very, very uncommon. So what DOI did is it said, "Okay, we want to give you five years. We want to give you five years on a probationary contract, teachers. We want you to see, we want you to learn and grow and have five years in that probationary area before we move you to term." So is that good for an HR department? In all honesty, it's good in that the principals can work with them for those three years, and then if, and then if they get to like year four, and they have, and we do have some of these, that they have worked with, and they've put them on plans, and they've done all kinds of things for them, and now we're about to go into like the fourth year of the probationary year, then instead of having the high level of requirements of a term contract, and they just haven't been able to cut it, and we do have principals with a couple of these right now that we're working with, then now they can terminate them after even three and four years on a probationary contract. Teachers feel both ways about it. They feel both ways about it. If I were a teacher, I probably would think, well, you know, being on a probationary contract for five years is a long time until I get to that level of term contract.
They could let you go at three years.
Much easier than a term contract. I think it's always important to know, and what I teach principals though, don't come to me and just tell me, "This teacher's got to go in the best interest of the district." No, we have very specific requirements. They can't even, we will never bring to you without the standard that we apply, which is at least two summary memorandums and evidence that they have worked with these teachers, provided training and so forth, walkthroughs and so forth, and then the higher level for the term contracts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me say that again? We don't need to cut through that.
Good point, that in a principal change, that could be very useful. Okay, I want to talk to you about the Teacher Incentive Allotment. I don't know how much you've heard about it, but we've been really breaking out some news about this this week. Came out of House Bill 3. It's a key part of House Bill 3, and of course, it's dedicated to recruiting, supporting, and retaining our highly effective teachers in all schools, with particular emphasis on the high needs and rural schools in Texas. So this is money. This is money. So look at how much money this is. The state is telling us right now that the potential designation levels per teacher are anywhere from $3,000 to $32,000 a year. And those amounts are going to be based upon, first of all, the school socioeconomic level and whether it's a rural or not rural school. So some pretty big money here. So in this journey to TIA, what we're doing is we're developing a local teacher designation system that includes what measures we're going to use, what the student growth measures, all the things that we're going to use to get to deciding who gets what. It's going to require a lot of planning. It's going to require involving stakeholders. This week, I've met with two different groups this week, the principals and also the QDEC. And now, when I talk with you about it, it's going to require a lot of engagement. It's going to require adequate time to prepare for the rollout. There are many pieces to this and a strong communication plan. So the first thing, there are three steps that have to be done. The first step is that Waco ISD must determine the best cohort. So we were given four options, A, B, C, and D. A and B are not ones that we consider because those are for school districts who are already implementing a comp plan, and they're working already with the data and providing the money. So then we have the option of C and D. The difference between Cohort C and Cohort D is Cohort C, we start on it right now. We're doing the planning, we're getting it all set up, and then in 2020 and '21, so next school year, will be the data capture year where we are capturing teachers' growth measures and their T-test scores, and heading toward then getting the money out quicker. If we waited and went with Cohort D, we wouldn't see the money until a year later, and I'll show you that whole schedule in just a minute. So we're recommending that we go with Cohort C, which is build out the plan right now, show everything to the teachers, and then when we start school next year, we're rolling with capturing the data to head towards the spring of '21 and presenting it to the state. So here is the timeline for Cohort C. The timeline in the readiness checklist is step two. So you can see that if we go with Cohort C, the funds flow in the spring of '22 or the fall of '22. And still, that's two years from now before anybody will begin to see money, at least. If we go with D, it would be three years before any money would begin to flow. So here's the timeline. I guess you take a minute to look at it, and the success factors, of course, involve a strongly calibrated teacher observation system, accurate measures of teacher impact on student growth, developing this local system, the rollout and communication plan, the plan for spending the allotment funds, and then the sustainability. I'll let that sit there for just a minute. These are the timelines and the checklist. So then we have some questions that we need to respond to, to TEA regarding the Cohort C of the Teacher Incentive Allotment. So the first question is, which teacher observation rubric will we use next year in 2021? Well, Waco ISD is using T-Tests, which is the state default evaluation system. So that would be T-Tests. Then the second question is, what student growth measures do you plan to use as part of the summative rating during next year and for this plan? And so we're recommending what we are using that the teachers, I think, feel the most comfortable with, and that is district pre and post tests. Question number three asks, as your district creates this designation system, what types of measures do you plan on using for overall teacher effectiveness? And so we're going to look at teacher performance and student growth, so in other words, T-Tests and pre and post tests. But then we're also going to look at things like, are they ESL certified? Are they meeting requirements for their mandatory trainings, completing the state reading academy, which is required now for elementary teachers, and so forth. Question number four asks, which teaching assignments are you planning to include in your local designation system? At this time, we're recommending that it be the core content and grade-level teachers that we would include for the designation system. And then the last question asks, what stakeholder engagement strategies are we planning to use? The primary engagement strategy will be through the district advisory committee, the Quality District Advisory Committee, the QDEC. So step three is, after we've determined this cohort, and we certainly think that it's C so that we can get moving on it, then we'll be sending in the letter of intent to TEA by January 24th. And that's the end of that presentation. Questions or comments about the Teacher Incentive Allotment?
Any questions about the board?
I just want to add, this is real money for our teachers, and it's administratively complicated, but we hope that it will be worth it for our staff and that they have an opportunity to earn a little bit more money for doing good work. So we appreciate the state for providing this to teachers.
And thank you to you, Dr. McWilliams, for bringing this information to us in such a timely manner. Clearly, the landscape's changing, and we appreciate this information as we prepare for these future timelines. So thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll proceed to Item 6, Review and Discussion Data-Driven Instruction Framework.
All right. Well, this is a little bit different. We're going to do a little bit of activity together, so are we ready for that? Okay.
So we have homework?
You can cheat, yeah. No homework, not yet, anyway. You were provided in your packet with a handout that I'm not going to just spend a lot of time over just because, okay, so let me, I'm going to be teaching. I'm dipping into teaching mode, which means I cannot stand behind this podium, so. I just can't. So, does she have one?
We might need to get her a microphone. Is there a handheld there?
Is it this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, if I need one.
They're working on it.
Try to stay put, if that's the case.
Whatever's comfortable to you.
Thank you. This is a handout that I was in your packet. And really what this is, if you had a chance to look over it, it just gives you an overview of what data-driven instruction is and what we're getting ready to embark upon. And so we kicked this off with our campus principals, instructional specialists, coaches, and curriculum content coordinators on, what day was that? January the, I just lost my train of thoughts. Well, 6th, we kind of started on our, at Mountain View, with Mountain View Dean Highland and South Waco, and then last week here. And so what data-driven instruction is, is it's a part of a suite of trainings from Texas Instructional Leadership. And so last year, Kiana White and myself and our other role before we moved into our positions here spent a year-long training around data-driven instruction, campus culture and staff culture, lesson planning, assessment. It was over thirty, thirty-some days of training that we spent. And so it's very intense, but with those, those each are separate trainings within the suite of training. And so before coming to Waco ISD and working with schools that I had worked with before and improvement, those were things that we were implementing, and so they showed great improvement, and all campuses showed growth. And so data-driven instruction is what we call a super lever because it has the capacity to show really strong growth because that's where, that's kind of where our focus is because it digs down into standards and really gets teachers understanding deeply about what it is that they're supposed to be teaching. So we're starting this with, as I said, our principals, instructional specialists, and coordinators here. The only folks who can offer this training are those who have gone through that year-long training, and right now, those are only the service centers who offer that. When I came to Waco ISD and when Ms. White came, we left the service center and left a hole there because you have to be certified to do it, and they didn't have other trainers in the pipeline. And so they were gracious enough, as well as TEA, because we had to ask permission to be able to do this training, although we're not employed by the service center any longer, here and us lead it. And so they agreed because they want us to be able to do it here. Otherwise, though, we wouldn't have had a trainer. And so they've allowed us to do it in collaboration with Region 12. And so Region 12 has also been very gracious with their school improvement funding as well, because they also receive a large amount of money to support campuses. We had included money in our school improvement grant to pay for this, but they informed us that they are actually going to be able to pay for that for us. And so not only are they partnering with us, but all of the materials and resources that cost has now been offset, and we're going to be able to use that funding for something else. So that's what this is about, the first page of this packet that you have. And then the pages that follow are about the training cadence and how that looks. So I'm not going to read over everything on that colored page, but basically what it is, is there are five face-to-face cycles to where our folks come together for content, and then each cycle is followed by job-embedded professional development on campus and implementation support. So there's no just coming and getting information and then expecting people to go back and just implement. It's followed by that implementation support and then coaching of our principals and our instructional specialists. And so the way that will look here is that folks in our immediate curriculum instruction department will be coaching principals, and then our curriculum content specialists will be coaching our instructional specialists on campuses, so that we're really developing capacity and growing that so it's not a Band-Aid fix. It is a long-term growth, sustainable measure to address instruction. And so we're going to be doing that this year, and it will carry over into next year as well. So any questions about the model before I take you on a tour of what DDI really looks like?
I'm trying to figure out if Ms. White's here.
She isn't. She isn't here tonight, yeah.
I would add, this is our major instructional initiative that has been launched, and this, along with the development of a district customized scope and sequence document are the two large things that will drive the work that Ms. Cornblum has planned to improve student achievement, so.
There's another piece, when you, this talks about data-driven instruction, but there's another piece of training called action coaching. That's a part of the suite as well. And action coaching is growing our leaders when they go into the campus to really have conversations with their teachers about what it is they're seeing. So a piece connected to this that we're really going to be focusing on is when principals go into classrooms and they're seeing what's happening, we're really going to be looking for alignment. So if I say this is what I'm teaching, am I using the proper resources to measure that? Is there alignment there? Are we pacing our lessons through the scope of the unit, you know, to reach the level we need to reach? Or are we staying at the same level the whole time so then when we get to the end, they really, students really haven't had practice or experience with the level of learning that they need to? And so helping develop the capacity of our leaders to be able to have those conversations around that. And so that's another part that we're also working on as a part of this. But it is not a, it's not a one-and-done, meaning it's not a, we're going to do this for a few days, and at the end of the year, we'll be finished. This is something that's going to carry on and be something that's going to be focused on for a couple of years because it's that deep, I guess would be the way to put it. All right. So are you all ready to take a tour of what data-driven instruction involves? Okay. As we go through this, you have a sheet that looks like this, which is your notes page. I think that's sitting, yes. And so this will be kind of what we follow, so we are actually going to watch some things and discuss. Are you all comfortable with that?
Is this pass fail?
No? Are we okay? Okay. All right. You get to watch some movies. Okay. So the goal here is, and I can get pretty passionate about this stuff, so I'll try not to because we could be here much longer than I'm sure you want to be here if I do that. So what I hope by the end of this is that the board will have identified the essential elements of a strong data-driven culture, so what it is we're trying to achieve, and then identify the essential elements of a strong data meeting. So when our principals go into a data meeting, our instructional specialists, and they're leading these things, what does that look like? So that those are our goals. So the core idea here is that a focus on data-driven instruction and student culture are the single biggest drivers of success in schools. Those are our super levers. So student culture, not spending a lot of time there with you all tonight, but what that involves is really our routines on campus. Do we have good, solid, strong routines on campus to make everything run smoothly? Because we know on a campus where those things aren't in place, that has to be done first. So the big questions, how do we know if students are learning? And if they're not learning, what do we do about it? And that seems really simple, but it's really complex. So we're going to watch a video, and I apologize to those of you who've seen this with me recently, but getting poolside. So what does that mean, and how does this relate to what we're trying to do with teachers? So on your note page, on the first side that has more space, not the side with the table, this is where you have a space to kind of write your thoughts about this. So in the first video that we're going to watch, this is actually a video, if you've seen Man on Fire, we're only going to watch snippets, but what does Creasy do to evaluate PETA's performance? Might need to be a little louder. This one's a low one. This one's a low one.
You're a strong swimmer.
We never win.
I'm going to pause there for just a sec. So, Creasy was the gentleman. So, what did he do to evaluate her performance? And this is just a discussion. What did he do?
He told her, uh, she was a strong swimmer.
He did. So, he, he saw the good.
Positive reinforcement or positive reflection?
Anything else?
He addressed it immediately when it was going on. Not, it was like he came to her to tell her what was going on.
Right then.
Right then.
And the positive reinforcement is, is huge. All of those things are. And the, the, you know, the, the very first thing too, though, is he was there, right? He was there watching it happen and he, that, he saw what she was doing. And then, he reinforced the good stuff. And what if, you know, he, she just came home and said, "Well, I, I lost." And he said, "Well, you know, what was your time?" And then, he tried to develop a strategy based off of that. So, the big idea here is, is that we have to get poolside. We have to get alongside our kids. We have to see what they're doing. We have to look at their work to understand how we need to help them. But then, from a leadership perspective, we have to do that with our leaders. We have to get poolside. We have to walk alongside them. We have to be there to know how to help them. And so, this is twofold. How are we helping kids? But how are we helping the people in our schools who are trying to help our kids? Okay, so now we know, he said, "You are a strong swimmer, but you're the slowest off the blocks." So, he's, he's narrowed it down to a small part, right? Okay, let's see what happens next. Did I miss it? Oh, maybe he says it here. Maybe I gave it away. Yes, sir.
So, what do I do?
What do you think you should do? You're the fastest one in the water, you're the slowest one off the blocks. What do you think that means? What do you got to do?
Get faster off the blocks.
Get faster off the blocks.
Our big swimming is in three weeks.
Yeah?
I was getting in at the 150 freestyle.
Yeah, you'll be fine, you can be okay.
I'll still be slow.
You're not slow.
I never finish better than Terry.
Maybe you are slower.
Okay. While we talk, if you want to get back, that's fine. So, the next question was, what makes Creasy's analysis effective? Kind of gave it away.
You don't know what's about to come up? No, I just, it was an interesting exchange and I, I liked it. Okay, you open her ears by telling her she's a fast swimmer so that she can deliver the bad news next, that maybe she can hear it. But then, the back and forth there, I'm not sure what that netted in her mind about what needed to happen. At first, I thought they had something and then they got back and we ended up with, oh, I guess you're slow.
Yeah, I hope he was joking with her. I hope they had that banter.
And you and I know Denzel was joking.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the young years might have necessarily grasped the humor.
Yeah.
But... So, I'm not sure the answer.
Well, and it's, it's about discussion, right? I mean, what do we think?
He wasn't overreaching. I mean, he was observing and acknowledging that she came to the same conclusion. And then, I think there's a following discussion, if you will, of, again, along the lines of, what can she do? What will she do? What should she do?
And I did give it away a minute ago. But the first thing he said was, "You're the fastest in the water, but you're the slowest off the blocks. So, watch what happens next." Well, not here, but to maximize growth, the idea is we have to know specifically what students can and can't do. Not, you need to do it all. What specifically can you not do? And we were working with teachers, well, instructional specialists and we had the principals in the room. We connected it to coaching. You know, when, coaches do it best. Football coaches, basketball coaches, band directors, right? When our students are struggling, they take them right to the point of error and say, "Practice this." And they practice until practice is perfect, right? And then, once we get that, then we're ready for the game. Because if we don't practice perfect, then we're not ready when we hit the game. And so, they break it down into small parts versus running the whole length of the football field. And so, he said, "You're the slowest off the block." Now, maybe he could have been gen-, more gentle with that? The way he said that?
No, no, I thought that part was fine. I, I think it was later in the conversation where, and I didn't do-
He said, "Maybe you are slow."
Yeah, there seemed to be sort of an argument brewing about what the real problem was. What could be done about it?
Yeah. I see your point.
A coach, a good coach is going to recognize your weak points and, and have you build up, build upon them. And, you know, and sometimes recognizing your weak points, you also have to recognize what the strong points are. So, she's slow off the blocks, but she's a strong swimmer. So, you recognize both, uh, two areas and both of them can be approved and prove above.
And build upon that.
Yeah.
So, watch this next exchange and how does, how does he react to that? So, what he feels right now is her biggest area of growth.
Concentrating? Eyes are closed? What happened?
I flinched.
You flinched. The gunshot holds no fear, say it.
The gunshot holds no fear.
The gunshot holds no fear, say it.
The gunshot holds no fear.
Louder!
The gunshot holds no fear!
Louder!
The gunshot holds no fear!
That's good. You welcome the sound. In fact, it's the sound that sets you free. You are a prisoner on this block until that sound sets you free. Are you ready? Are you ready? Are you set?
Uh-huh.
Stop, 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 stop. Come back, come back, come back. Bang! Stop, 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 stop. Stop, come here. Hurry up, hurry up. Set? Bang! Bang! You don't flinch when you hear the gunshot, understand? You listen for the sound, you don't anticipate. Concentrate on the sound, you understand me? You're gaining on you. Go, 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 go. Stop, stop! Come on, get out of it, go again. Go again. Hold! Go, go, go. Go, 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 go. 10.99.
What happened there?
Training, conditioning, repetition. You weak, the, uh, keep going on point that she's slow off the blocks. So, you keep pushing her to get fast and as she said, don't let the gunshot scare you. And then, he brought some people in the end of the chair.
Yes, he did, right? And they practiced that, right? I mean, yes, she did swim the whole length of the pool sometimes. But went off the block and then, if the error was still there, he said, "Okay, stop, let's go back." Why, why, why continue repeating the, the problem, right? Let's fix it, let's go back until we get that perfect practice. And so, he kept doing that until she got it right. But he was also very encouraging through it all as well. So, let's think about that as connected to instruction now. Sometimes, when we go back, we look at our student learning and we go back to reteach, we just reteach it all exactly like we taught it the first time, the same way. Just, teachers kind of say, "Just louder and harder." And we think they're going to get it because of that, right? Because if we just, we get more firm with it, they're going to understand it. And so, we have to assess the, the error, the exact point of error, and get drilled down to that. But before that, we have to understand the exact conceptual misunderstanding they're having so that in the instruction we design, when we go back, is directly connected to that point of error. And that doesn't sound extremely complicated, but it is. Because we have to know all of the different bits of knowledge and skills that are connected to specific standards to know what kids have to know and be able to do. And so, data-driven instruction, and I think, so, there are actual examples on here of data meetings that actually follow the next slide. And we can go on and watch those, those are a part of the presentation. Or, what would be your preference? I just ask because I know it's a, I don't want to keep you here all night. But it is a part of the presentation. So, if you would like to actually see a real data meeting and how they look as connected to instruction, we'll, we'll watch that. Okay, all right. I just wanted to gauge the, how y'all are doing. So, that's what we have to do. We have to figure it out and we have to, we have to get instruction to that level. Okay, we're ready.
Do you have any questions at this point?
Yes, sir.
So, very fond of that. So, in a classroom setting, maybe I'm being too, too, uh, but when you've got 20 kids in a classroom with as many or more observations about boos and donuts and can and can't, how, how do you get to this level of instructional, I'm not saying capability, but focus? Because it seems like it's, it's like geometrical expansion in terms of the number of permutations and combinations that this poses from a data standpoint, gathering that.
So, I could actually show you, but we really won't do that because we will be here all night. But it, it really, really first starts with understanding what it is you have to teach. And we have things out there to guide us. Our teachers honestly are struggling a bit right now to use those resources for two things. We have a lot of them, we need to align. And then, our curriculum piece that Dr. Kincanon is talking about, that's a piece that needs to be aligned as well. But sometimes, in an effort to help our teachers, because I don't, nobody ever does anything from a bad place, right? We don't. I mean, we, we don't. When we spend too long on, um, wrote addition and subtractation, subtraction, multiplication and whatnot because we feel like our, you know, our kids need longer practice with just the basics. You know, you'll hear that a lot. But when they're assessed on STAR or wherever, that's not how they're assessed. None of that ever comes from a bad place. It comes from a place of, we think we're doing what's best to help our kids. And we have to, we have to understand our standards in a deep way to understand, okay, how do we do that while still getting to this level? And really, there are ways for us to understand our standards, but right now, things aren't quite packaged in a way to help teachers do that. And so, we aren't necessarily making it easy for them to do that. Okay. So, the big idea here is, how do we find more time to teach our students? We always say in education, "We don't have enough time. We have so much to teach, we don't have enough time." And if we don't have enough time to teach it the first time, basically, we don't have enough time definitely to teach it twice. So, we need to get it right the first time, right? So, we need to spend less time teaching what they already know and more time teaching what they need. And also, understanding a part of that is, might not be what they know, but what they don't know. And how do we teach it in exactly that way? So, the big idea, data-driven instruction is essence. It starts with assessment. It's backwards design, basically. We have to know what's going to be expected of them so that we can plan backwards. And this is K2 and all the way up. So, if it's a readiness standard, if it's, you know, kindergarten readiness and what they have to know when they leave, whatever it is, we have to know what that end game is so that we can go back from that and ensure that our instruction is reaching that level. So, data meetings, improving student learning every day. So, we're going to watch a couple, well, actually, a few more clips. When we do, I want, I want to present these with a kind of a caveat. These are from a book, the videos are. So, what you're going to see, they're from Paul Bemrich Centoya's work. This one is specifically from Leverage Leadership 2.0. With that being said, he has a network of charters. So, don't, I, I always want people to not pay attention to the, the uncommon school logo on there because we, this is a part of, of that and we have their permission to use. But just watch what's happening in the data meeting. They're a very structured network and so sometimes the way they interact, so not even the people, just what they're doing is what, what I would like for us to pay attention to. So, the teacher in this, or not the teacher, but the principal in this video, we're going, the first one, we're going to watch all the way through. The second one, we're going to stop about midway and, and just look and talk about. And I won't, I won't put you on the spot. I'll kind of tell you what it is we're looking at. But the first piece, and you're on the back of your page now, we're looking at, how did they start off the meeting? Like, what did they do? And then, that next video, we're going to be looking at, what does this principal do to effectively guide their, the teachers? Okay? Ready? So, we have to sign in to this because they are copyrighted. Good morning, Team Three.
Good morning.
So, we are going to dive into fractions, which we know is a power standard in third grade and something that our students traditionally struggle with. Last week, in particular, focusing on standard F1, where students had to create a fractional model and label it using unit fractions. We were at 95% or higher in each of the three classrooms, so kudos. Love to hear from one or two of you to just hear, what teacher actions did you take in order to lead to that high level of student achievement? Let me just make sure that when we start- So, on the back page you're looking there, it says, "See the success." So, just like we saw a man on fire when he praised her first, that's the first thing, we're looking at successes. And when our principals and our instructional specialists get in this data feedback loop, typically, what we're praising there on the "See the success" is what we were working on from the time before. So, in our data meeting, we're focusing. As a principal, I'm going back out, I'm observing and giving feedback around those things. And when we come back, we're talking about, what was really successful there? What did you do that helped your students achieve these results? And so, the last thing that principal did in that section was, she said, "What did you do that led to these results?" Because she really wants the teachers to analyze that and say, "What did I do?" So that we continue to say, "Ooh, that really did work." So, it's almost, you know, verbalizing that to say, "Wow, that worked. Let's, that's something that we need to keep doing because that led to the results that we're getting right now." So, we always start off the meeting by seeing the success.
I don't assume that they were making equal parts and like, if I erase them and say, and also confidence to self-evaluate their work and ask themselves, are they equal after the partition holds?
I'd say the same thing and there's like, as we're doing our laps where you're like saying, like, look at your fractions, make sure they're equal and try to like have them again, evaluate on their own, except for, instead of us asking them or telling them what they should do.
Okay, we'll go right into the next video. Okay, really look at what's happening on the chart in this one.
I want you to really zero in on three NF3C, um, and think about, what do students need to know and be able to show, and thinking about "know" being conceptual, and "show" being more of what we're going to see on their paper, in order to demonstrate mastery of the standard. So I'm going to give you guys two minutes, and then we'll share out and chart together.
They need to understand that each part, once it's all shaped in as one, as the same number, has to be the same number on the bottom, and they all have to be equal parts in order for it to be one whole.
Great, so let's go ahead and star the total number of equal parts represents the denominator. And let's write over here for "know", um, that if the denominator matches the same number as the numerator, it represents a whole number. Does that capture it? Sinisa, what do you have?
Um, it said if the numerator is greater than the denominator, there will be more than one whole.
Great. And Erin, when you jump in, you can add for "no" or "show", since we've gotten a lot for "no" now.
Okay, um, I, so I can have it put together, so long as the, as numerator increases, that means we are selecting or shading more equal parts, so, scars are shading equal, the number of equal parts versus numerator.
And I think we want to get still at this idea of, still split into the same number of equal parts.
Um, and equal split.
So, I am going to ask there, I think it pertains to the question you asked, how do we get them down? So, what did you, what did you see in that section? So that was a standard. No, not, I was just saying, unrelated. Just what did you see in the video? Yeah. So they were taking a standard, and on the chart, it has "know" and "show." So what they're doing is they're breaking down into conceptual pieces of learning that kids have to understand. So when I'm teaching it, what are all the little pieces that they have to know? And I'll give a personal example of, when I was a principal, and we were running a data meeting, and I, we were talking about a student who making mistakes. And, you know, we're trying to dig deep, and the teacher said, "God, if they would just quit making these silly mistakes. They, they know this, it's these silly mistakes." And, I said to my instructional coach, I said, "Would you go sit in the class, and, you know, tomorrow or whatnot, and sit by that student and watch what you see happening?" It wasn't a silly mistake. The student was struggling with the subtraction part of division. And so, we could have said silly mistakes all day long, right? But until we got poolside, till we walked, we sat there and really thought, but the, but at the time, the teacher wasn't, now whether they should have or shouldn't, you know, you might, that might be like, well, how could we not know that? But, we hadn't broken the discrete parts of that down to say, "This is it." And so what we were doing was, just teaching division, you know, as a whole, but we weren't fixing the subtraction mistake. And so that's what they're doing here, breaking that down and do, what are all the pieces? And sometimes there's prerequisite skills wrapped up in that, that, that will come about. That this is a skill that a student should have brought to this grade level, from the grade level before. So, in order to do these things, they have to know this. So then, when we go back and we look at their work, we can check for those things. But, consider our new teachers. And if new teachers are sitting around a table where we're having deep discussions around learning and our standards, and what kids really have to know, what they're learning from that discussion, and the people who may be more veteran than them, as well as an expert other leading the conversation, so their instructional specialist leading the conversation. So what, what this does is really gets them down to drilling really deep into our standards, and really thinking about, what do they have to know and be able to do?
And they're learning from each other and building that capacity. Sometimes we, sometimes we teach things wrong, and if we don't know. Um, and, in some of those standards, you can teach too high, or you can teach too low. And so they're, they're using the team to really calibrate the thinking for instruction.
Or if we're just following a resource that is telling us to do something, but, we know that our resources that we have, that we adopt, aren't completely aligned, right, to the state standards. They're partially, they only have to be so much, you know, so aligned. I think it's fifty to sixty percent to be able to be adopted. So sometimes there are things in there that really aren't in your lane, that teachers will just go with it and trust the resource, when really, we have to be the experts in the room and be discretionary about what it is with our, what we're using with our students. And, and know when to look at something and say, "Hmm, this doesn't quite hit the mark. This, this isn't where we need it to be." And we, it's hard to do that if we don't have a deep understanding of what we're, what we're supposed to teach.
So what you're saying is, on that example, division, subtraction, not getting a piece of it, but being deemed a silly mistake. What was actually happening in that sequence was, the student is not being potentially taught something they should have known, or, or should know. It folded back more layers to isolate an area that he didn't bring forward, maybe, you know, from prior year, or prior exercises, or whatever, which could have impaired that student for a period of time as the instructor-teacher goes through sequential type exercises.
Yes, and not only in math, but in other subject areas. What, what happens in science if we are doing subtraction? But nobody's really pinpointed. This is a struggle for me, because somehow we missed it over the years. And so you go back, and the idea is, is that we're really zoning in then. For initial instruction and planning, when we bring this into the planning process on the front end, then our plans get better. When we bring it in on the back end, then our intervention gets better. So it's a, it's a twofold, it's a twofold process. So that, going back to the man on fire clip, he made her practice jumping off the block many, many times. He didn't swim the pool every time, right? She didn't need to swim the length of the pool. It wasn't her speed that was the problem, it was the blocks. So if I would have put division in front of that student, just, okay, here, work these twenty division problems, because you obviously need more practice with division, I could have done that all day, right? And we wouldn't have gotten it. Now, sometimes it might have looked like they did understand, if perhaps there wasn't regrouping in that subtraction piece. If it was really just straight subtraction and it worked out that way. But if I had to regroup in my subtraction, and that's the part that was catching me, then I'm going to miss those problems. Which, if we don't look closely, we could still characterize as silly mistakes.
Is that part of the, I'm looking at this and the assessment, is that part of the assessment that, that, uh, when the student come in, that he's supposed to be, he or she's supposed to be assessed on what's her capabilities or their capabilities are? Okay, do, um, would that all them the next year, as they progress on?
The assessment results, or the, or the, or the gaps? Which, both, both, really, I mean, yeah. So, I think two things there. Developing conversation between grade levels, you know, when we're moving kids up, so that we're not starting over, year after year, with the same things. I think that backs down to our RTI system, and what we have in that, and making that stronger, so that, when Mr. Manning comes to my class, I don't have to start all of that process over again. I look and I see, okay, what did they do with Mr. Manning last year? What worked?
Right.
And I pick up where they left off. But you're right, oftentimes, and this isn't, this isn't singular to Waco. I mean, this is a, this happens a lot in many districts. But oftentimes, you're exactly right. We don't talk, or we don't have good systems of information sharing, whatever that might be. And so we do the same things over and over, and we go through all of this trial and error, trying to figure out what works, when someone before us may have figured it out. So we're, we're losing time.
Well, we know, um, we always know that during the summertime, the, uh,
Summer slide.
Yeah, the lag. And then, when, when, when the school year starts, well, once again, that, uh, teacher is going to have to bring that kid back up to the point at the, that, that they were at the end of the year. So that's going to take, uh, that's going to take some time away from what they're doing also, isn't it? And that's going to be a time problem?
Typically, yes. I mean, typically every year, you do have kids who have a, a summer slide a bit. So you have to address that, and that, again, that, that's common, you know. But, but still, when we go back, if we see where they were and what had been done, you know, a lot of kids, once we get them back in the rhythm, we can get them there. But, i- if we don't have a tight plan, then, we're going to spend a whole lot of time doing things that people have already done, trying to figure out exactly what the problem is. And so, yeah, we want to try to alleviate that. But, what we really want to do, in the meantime, is catch these gaps, right, before they happen. And a lot of that backs down to things that we're doing now in the district. Like we've, on our tested grades, um, hasn't started yet, but we had district checkpoints, which were much broader checkpoints. So, a kid might go through three units before they had a checkpoint, before we looked at assessments. That's three units. That could be a month and a half, that could be two months. How do I go back and clean up anything that they may need help with? If I didn't pinpoint it, well, I mean, you can, but you, you're way past, you're on to new stuff. And so, putting smaller, like, more of a unit checkpoint, so that we're catching it right away. But then what I'm hopeful for is looking at next year, to where we implement this into a strong lesson planning cycle, is that our formative checks each day. So I teach long division today, whatever it is that I'm going to use that day as my activity. Once I understand the depth of this standard, I'm catching it then. So tomorrow, when my class comes back in, I already know the five that are having trouble with the subtraction piece of division. I'm teaching my lesson, I'm calling those five back, I'm fixing it right then. The others are doing their possibly independent work at that time, cleaning it up, and now we're ready to move on. Versus getting five weeks out, and nobody's fixed my issue, and now they're compounded, because now I don't know other things. Does that make, yeah. So, that's what we're working toward. So, what, what time is it? I was going to say, why don't we, do you want to stop? You get the idea. So what's developed from here, just if you, if we look at this sheet, basically, I'll talk you through it. What happens from here is they name the gap. They say, "This is the conceptual gap." This is a conceptual gap, perhaps if I've just given an assessment for my class, this is it, and I need to go back, and this has to be pre-taught to everyone. And then, these are the smaller conceptual gaps that are going to be directed toward intervention. Because these are gaps that not everyone has, only the few, right? And that's going to, that's going to be addressed through intervention. And then, within that meeting, they, they make a reteach plan. And that reteach plan is connected to the whole class plan. And so they develop that plan, and there's training around that embedded within this training. And then that's when the principal goes out, and that's what the principal is observing and giving feedback around. Not always, but, we're going to encourage them in their walks that they do, that this is really what they want to go back, because they're having these deep discussions about learning. So how does that look then, when I go back in the classroom? But it's a, it's a coaching conversation between the teacher and the principal, because we're learning and growing together. And then, when we come back to the data meeting, what we hope is that, that reteach that, that I went and observed, that that's what, that's the success I'm praising at the top. And we're talking about why we saw the success we did, so that we can keep repeating that, and then we move on to the next thing. And we just keep hacking away, until we get it all cleaned up. And when I say cleaned up, I don't mean cleaned up, I mean, you know, wherever you are. That, that's how it works. Yeah, until you make the progress and get your kids where they need to be and secure with everything they need to be secure on.
So, Mrs. Cornblum has trained almost a hundred, her first two days of training with the leadership instructional specialist principals, and, um, to carry this out to the campuses, and this is a piece of the work that we're doing. Um, she's starting where we are, we're, you know, we're almost February.
Ideally, this would start in August.
So, she's starting there, and then the summer she, and we're also starting, um, Mrs. White will be starting the action coaching piece.
Next week.
Next week, and then the summer, we'll be writing curriculum to go a lot, to, to, um, ensure that we're all on the same page with the scope and sequence, the timing, and understanding those standards even more. So it's capacity building, um, and kind of building it while we're flying it.
But with those assessments that I mentioned, moving to the, we're,
And then the assessment piece.
Moving right now to those unit assessments with the grades. We're only focusing on, right now, just the tested grades. Um, trying to rewrite the assessments, because you, there's, that's difficult work, it takes time. And we're in the middle of a school year, so we can't, we can't rewrite a whole district worth of assessments. So, we're going to start there, um, on the twenty-fifth, which is a Saturday, we're having our assessments, and we're bringing, we're asking some teachers from across the district to come in and to view those, and to vet them. And we're, we have some criteria to ensure that they're aligned, because that's another, if our assessments aren't aligned, then the data that we're getting back, that we're responding to, isn't very helpful. So, um, we're going to come in and revise those, and then, um, get those printed for them. And so we're trying to take a little bit of that work off their plate. And we're doing that in middle school with our math, um, reading and science. High school, right now, they are relooking at assessments, but we're not rewriting any assessments there. You know, high school's a little different, but they're implementing the DDI, but we're just not tackling assessments right now. But this summer, we'll be looking at that for, across the scope, so.
It's a process, and, um, all, all of the pieces are important, but we're starting right where we can, as fast as we can,
Right.
to get the work moving.
Right, and we'll, right now, you heard me say that it was principals and these instructional specialists. We'll do a phase two, which will bring in assistant principals and such, next year. But, it is a job-embedded model that requires coaching, and so we can only bring in the amount of people who we can coach. And so, um, that's why it kind of has to go in phases. Well, thank you for indulging me.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, don't go, okay.
Class isn't over yet, okay? Anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir. Is, uh, will this be presented to the transformational schools also, or just doing it for us?
So, and they were invited to come. Um, we presented it at the principals' meeting, and then I presented it to Dr. McDurran and Mr. Love at the time. Um, right now, AltaVista has chosen to be involved. Um, Indian Spring wants to be involved, but, um, Mr. Alexander had some things going on, so he's going to come wave two. Um, but yes, they are, they are invited, yeah. Most certainly.
Any other questions? Thinking. All right, just one, real quick, fifteen-second answer, most. I've got, I, I like the strategy of identifying individual students' constraints, helping them focus efforts, again, better at that particular thing. Where's the data?
I actu- I have data, I have real data.
But I'm just, this is about data-driven, and I'm not...
Are you talking about data that we're using, or data to show that this works?
No, data-driven instruction. I just thought I was going to see more data in the visualization in our presentation tonight.
No, okay, so...
I don't know who wanted to, I just thought I was.
That, so the standard that they were looking at, they chose to look at that standard based on an assessment that they just took. And so they, they analyzed? Where, where did we not hit our mark that we wanted to hit?
The data's embedded in the assessment.
Yes, yes, so that's...
I just, but, okay.
Yeah, hence the reason for our rewrite of our unit assessments. Because they, well, moving to unit assessments and then rewriting them, because they have to be aligned to give us the good, strong data that we need to use to make these instructional decisions.
Ms. Cornblum.
And in the lower grades, it could be different data. You know, it could be reading data, it doesn't have to be a STAR-like piece of data. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't have to look that way.
Carrie's always anxious to see like, forty pages of pure data.
Oh, I can do, I can do that. We can do that next time.
Ms. Cornblum?
Yes.
Uh, if there are any other questions?
If there are any other questions right now, if I may? We've talked about data-driven instruction forever.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And it's just been kind of in the talk, kind of in the dialogue, the discussion. This has been, and by the way, you can come back anytime and finish the other half of this if you choose. But, this is new language that I don't remember hearing before. And I believe it's transformational. I believe you've identified through this process, the TIA, it's where the rubber hits the road in the classroom, okay? This language, I think, is going to be producing phenomenal results for us. And I'll go forward and say, with your certification and Ms. White's certification, it's like mining gold. I mean, applying your skills to the areas that you've indicated here and bringing that forward into the classrooms is, is such a revelation, I think, and, and transformational. So, your presentation was amazing and wishing nothing, and I know it will be continued success as you implement this and drive it forward. And I've, I'm looking forward to hearing more.
I appreciate your, your words. Do know, it, it, it's hard work. I mean, this is, you know, I don't, I don't want to make this seem easy. It's hard work. Also, try to communicate to principals, though, we're here to support you and it's a learning process, we're, we're all growing together. And so, we take it a chunk at a time. And it's not an "I gotcha," it's a, we're, here's the whole package. This is the piece we're going to focus on getting good at first and then we're going to move. But obviously, you can see the way that, that meeting ran. It, it does require a little back-end work. So, I, I, you know, I don't, I just want you to know it's hard. And, and so, at the same time, when we're considering this, we're also thinking about, what are we doing that we don't need to do? Because in education, we're really good about just adding more and never stopping. And so, thinking about what can we stop to start this work? And so, that's a constant conversation and we're also constantly having those conversations with our principals and listening to them. And the work's barely started, so they might not even know what they need us to stop right now. But as we start, you know, really questioning ourselves, what, what are we doing? Why are we doing things? If we're doing it, is it producing the results we need? And if it's not, then stop. What do we need to stop so that we can start?
Well, we appreciate the work you and Ms. White have done in, in departments and approaching it the way you have been and bringing forward your expertise, as well as, you know, if, if there's resources that you need to continue the effort. I know Dr. Kincanon is very receptive to hearing what resources we need to apply, so...
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, there is nothing further on our agenda.
We were going to ask that Kyle DeBeere come forward and give us some information regarding Coach Chapman's funeral arrangements.
As our community comes together to both mourn the loss of Coach Chapman and celebrate the incredible legacy of community service that his life represents, there'll be a couple of opportunities for the community to, to come together in the next couple of days. The first is a visitation that's happening tomorrow, starting at 6:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center at University High School. And then, on Saturday, there will be a memorial service that starts at 1:00 PM at the Waco ISD Stadium.
There's no other business currently. Again, we ask that you keep Coach Chapman and his family in your thoughts and prayers. At this time, we're going to adjourn and I hope everyone has a very pleasant and safe MLK Day on Monday. So, we're adjourned.